Push this right here, the enter. And then push again. Test it.
Test us.
Hello? Try a different test.
Try another one.
Are you? Hi, just are you testing for me?
No, we're not. Latasha, sorry.
Okay, no worries. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
I guess we can walk this one back and forth. We have speakers at the podium. I will need to come and get this from.
You started the recording?
We'll call the meeting of this January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three to order. If staff could call roll, please.
Here.
Here. Thank you. Before us tonight, we have two minutes to look at. So first minutes are December seventh, two thousand twenty-two, looking for a motion. Mr. Wegman made a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Person. All those, all those saying aye? A motion? Mr. Pearson, second. All those in favor by saying aye, or any discussion I should ask first, any discussion, changes? Hearing none. All those in favor by saying aye? Opposed? Hearing none. The minutes passed for January fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Do we have any changes to our agenda tonight? Thank you. At this time, anyone in the audience tonight under public comment or online? If they wish to speak to our fellow council commissioners at this time? And I don't see anybody online that would raise their hand. Okay, anyone in the audience on their public comment? Seeing or hearing none, we'll close the public comment period. And we do not have a public hearing. We do not have unfinished business. We move right away to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and apologies both to you tonight and anyone who may be watching this after the fact or live. We do have some technical difficulties with our production of this meeting, so you may have some sound going in and out. Tiffany Spear, on behalf of the Long Beach and Strategic Planning Management Staff here, working on, once again, our two thousand twenty-four Comprehensive Plan periodic review. Tonight, we're going to be looking at utilities and public services. And this is part one of a two-part group discussion, in part because the city of Lakewood does not own its power sewer or water utilities. And so we're having partners come in to talk to us about that. But we also are going to have some special guests from our secondary and higher education entities that are here in Lakewood as well. In front of you on this screen, you'll see the upcoming schedule. So tonight, we have utilities and public service, part one. February first, we'll have that part two. And then we're going to move on to land use and maps that are included in the comprehensive plan as of now. Second meeting in February will be community character and urban design. And then there's going to be a look at racially disparate impacts and equity analysis for all of the elements across the whole update. And then beginning in March, we're going to return to housing. And if you recall, that's where we started back in September. We're going to come back to you now with actually some updated documents to start to talk about. And again, talking about the racially disparate impacts that may be reflected in historical development patterns here in Lakewood. As I mentioned before, the city of Lakewood does not own its power, water, or sewer utilities. And so we do have tonight a representative from Tacoma Power and a representative from the Lakewood Water District to speak to you. And then we also have Joyce Love Day from Clover Park Technical College. But in the comp plan itself, before we have those speakers, there is a requirement to have a utilities element, which the city has. It includes nineteen goals and eighty-four policies. And those were provided to you in the materials for this evening. The request that was put out to all of our partners that will be speaking to you both tonight and in February, if they could, given the time constraint they were get under, was to take a look at the policies and just let us know if there were any changes that they would recommend. And even if that doesn't come to surface tonight or on February, I'll be working with them over the next year to make sure we do reflect those things. So we will also be reaching out to business owners, property owners, homeowners, and others to talk about these issues as we do the larger periodic review discussion. In public services, it's kind of a mixed bag. This is not a required element within the comprehensive plan, but the city's comp plan does have this as a chapter. It includes twenty-one goals and ninety policies. And as you can see from this list here, it's a wide range. So emergency services, police services, education and library services, human services, community identification, revitalizing neighborhoods, and providing economic opportunity for historically low-income communities. And then taking a look at public engagement just across the board as the city operates. So these policies, at this point, we're not sure if we're going to keep this as its own chapter, or if we're going to incorporate it into the reorganization in other areas that are more directly related. But in any event, tonight, we're operating under this chapter, and that's why we're going to be hearing from our educational partners. So I am going to stop talking, and I'm going to invite Ms. Love Day to the dais. And I think she's going to have to use this mic as well.
Thank you for inviting me to be here this evening. I do appreciate it. Once again, I am Joyce Love Day, and I'm the president of Clover Park Technical College. And it is definitely my privilege to be able to be here and talk with you this evening. First, I just want to tell you a little bit about Clover Park and our services and our impact within Lakewood. First of all, you know, we are a college that serves Pierce County, but we lean pretty heavily in this location. And we definitely feel like we are at home in Lakewood. And you make us at home in Lakewood, and we definitely appreciate that. We also have our satellite campus in South Hill, where our aviation programs are offered. And then we also have a third location at Women's Correctional Facility at Purdy, where we teach cosmetology to inmates there. So we offer, as a technical college, we offer certificates, associate of applied degrees, and bachelor's degrees in many areas. In our certificates and degrees, we teach and train people in over forty different technical areas. We, those areas include things such as professional piloting, computer security, welding. We have twelve healthcare fields, in addition to nursing, and manufacturing, and many other things. We offer a bachelor's of applied science degree in four areas, in operations management, cybersecurity, interior design, and then mechatronics, engineering, technology, and automation. So in terms of how many students we serve from Lakewood, in Lakewood, the last year, we served about seven hundred students who find their home in Lakewood. Over the past five years, there have been roughly three thousand from Lakewood who have attended our college. The students that come from Lakewood are a bit more diverse than our regular student body. Already, our student body is about sixty-one percent students of color. Those coming from Lakewood comprise sixty-nine percent students of color, with twenty-one percent of those claiming a Hispanic background, twenty percent black, nine percent Asian Pacific Islander, and ten percent are mixed race. Ten percent of the students coming from Lakewood are considered economically disadvantaged, and sixty percent are female. And the most common area of education at CPTC from those who reside in Lakewood are in the healthcare field, primarily in nursing assistant, LPN, and pre-nursing. So in addition to the impact of educating our community, CPTC impacts Lakewood in other ways as well. So CPTC brings income to Lakewood through payroll of many of our faculty, staff, and students. We attract students to Lakewood. In fact, twenty percent of our students come from other areas and move here temporarily to go to school at Clover Park. Our students and staff and faculty purchase services and goods here, and the contributions of our graduates are immense. You will see Clover Park's alumni working in your local pharmacy, in the hospital, perhaps as your nurse. If you have a surgery, they are likely to be in that surgical room. You may not be aware of them, but they're assuring that you're taken care of well. They are preparing instruments so that they are clean. And as they are worked on you, they do blood work. They work in the histology departments. They cut our hair. They repair your car. They set up computer systems for your business. They add a new heating system to your home. They protect, provide interior design services. And they may even be flying the plane, piloting the plane that you fly. So in addition to seeing our students around Lakewood and around the area, you can also note that Clover Park contributes to the city of Lakewood through the McGavick Center. And I want to talk about that partnership for just a moment. In two thousand and seven, the city of Lakewood partnered with Clover Park to construct the McGavick Conference Center, of which I think all of us, all of you have been in. And that partnership meant a great deal to us at that time and continues to. It provides the city with a large venue for private events, including conferences and weddings. And it also brings revenue to the city's vendors for catering, entertainment, and other goods and services. In two thousand and seven, Lakewood committed to paying for twenty years on a loan or on, to help with the cost of the certificate of purchase for the building. And that results in, it was a two mil, over a two million dollar commitment. And each year, for a twenty-year period, the city of Lakewood pays one hundred and one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, or eleven percent of what the total construction cost was when you look at that in entirety. The city, the funding from the city is the revenue from the lodging tax. The agreement was made in two thousand and seven, and it allowed for twelve city days per year. And that was subsequently changed to eighteen city days per year. And those city days run through, for a thirty-year period, through two thousand and thirty-seven. We really appreciate the partnership with Lakewood. And thank you so much for supporting the McGavick Center and making that such a center of our community. We also have the Flett Creek property in Lakewood. I don't know if any of you were involved in that decision long ago. It was before my time at Clover Park. But that property was a Flett Dairy Farm, and it was transferred over to Clover Park as an area that will be preserved as a, for Flett Creek Environmental Area. So I see, when we talk about environment in the plan, certainly that, the Flett Creek property is part of that. We use that for our environmental sciences area, where they do water testing and other things over there to help those students learn and grow. In looking at the comprehensive plan, I saw Clover Park in that plan, not only by name a few times, but just through the whole emphasis of the purpose of that plan. We saw ourselves in everything from supporting transitioning JBLM soldiers to the environmental area, to creating master plans, to bring strategy within the city. Two areas that particularly struck me for the plan were, first of all, in the economic development area. We see ourselves as a primary support to economic development in this area. I think it is well-written within the plan. And I think that, as I read the plan, I know that there are many more ways that we can partner together in that economic development. For example, the Economic Development Board for Pierce County has brought potential businesses who are looking for a place to build their next manufacturing center to come and tour our manufacturing center at Clover Park so they can see the level of candidates that they had, could have in the workforce that we can help them develop. And I encourage more of that as we go forward. The other area was certainly in the education. We saw ourselves there very strongly. And the only thing that I noted under goal PS eleven, PS eleven dot three, where it talks about working with colleges to enhance area infrastructure to better serve college facilities, such as improve pedestrian, bike, and bus connections, and more student housing and support services in the surrounding area. So one area that I view it as maybe a bit of a change in wording, instead of talking about student housing, I would say affordable housing for students. We do not have traditional student housing, such as dorms. The average age of students is in the upper twenties. And those coming from Lakewood are actually a little bit older. I think they were, had that on my notes, I think it was thirty-two. And so certainly, there is a need for housing, and there's a need for affordable housing. And many of our students are experiencing housing insecurity and homelessness. And I see opportunities for partnering in the future, maybe with the city and the colleges. But to look and see how we can support students as they are going to school with stable housing. I know TCC and UW-T had a partnership that is still underway with Tacoma Housing Authority, where some apartment complexes were built. And students, while they are going to school, they and their families can stay there. And they are furthering the benefits for their family and helping them develop themselves into a place where they can care for their families and earn a high-wage job. And so I just see that there can be opportunities in the future for greater partnership. So thank you so much for including us and our voice in this plan. I think that it is a good one. I see many places that we can connect and continue to work together. Thank you very much.
Would you like, Mr. Chair, to offer a question and answer?
Thank you. Several questions. Trying to, how's it working with businesses to do apprenticeships and you're working through yours? If you could maybe expand on that a little bit?
So apprenticeships are, certainly, we are trying to expand our apprenticeships. We do work primarily with internships. And I would say probably eighty percent of our programs have internships and work-based learning as part of their programs, and possibly even more than eighty percent. But apprenticeships are always employer-based, and there needs to be the employer who signs up for that to be an apprentice organization. And so we currently work with a rovers apprenticeship. We're also working with a medical assisting apprenticeship through SCIU and are looking at others and trying to expand that because we want to be much more oriented towards having students get their work and getting their feet where, in that industry, while they're going to school. And so we're developing new connections with industry to look at how we can even expand that.
Well, I'm doing handyman work now, and so I'm in the trades a lot. And just about, if I go to a plumbing warehouse, they're looking for people. Their unions will pay people to go get trained. So I, you know, how do we make that? And it's the same with electrical folks. You talked about affordable housing. Is, you know, I mean, just right across the street, there's a big apartment complex now. And would there be ways to get some grants to maybe subsidize some of that housing so it's more affordable for students?
Yes, I think that there could be. I've not, we've not looked right across the street here. We have been in conversations with Marla Levitt in the past. We continue to look at what we can do to help expand housing for our students and housing grants, housing support.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying we should do Section Eight necessarily for students, but we have Section Eight to try and help some of that. But couldn't we have a Section Eight-type thing that's student-oriented? You know? Okay, and then I guess my last question would be, we have open doors in the school district, so that gets them up to age twenty-one. And you just said, most of your students are at the, you know, late twenties or early thirties. So we've got a gap that we're missing some kids or young people.
And that has certainly been an area that has been a point of focus and concern that for students, even students that have gone and completed high school along the regular timeframe, they don't always make the next step. So we have a good relationship with Clover Park School District. And in terms of working with them to try and develop programs and work with them, I know we've offered an NAC program there. We have some plans that are being built to try and get students in the door more quickly. We have a thirteenth-year grant that we offer students so they know that they can come and go to school at no cost to themselves. It's, students don't always hear and see that, and they don't always apply for financial aid. And that's a statewide priority, is to help students apply for financial aid because we have to be able to assess their financial scenario and order, and assess that there is some financial need before they can be qualified for any of the state grants and funding that's there. Washington has a tremendous financial support system. The challenge is, we are about forty-eight, I believe it is, in terms of our students completing the FAFSA grant. Yeah, excuse me, the FAFSA paperwork. So we're working on that. We're working with some partners to try and help and make that a change within Washington State. You'll hear about that being certainly a priority among some of our legislators to help get students filling out the paperwork so that they can qualify for the funding that's available in the state of Washington.
Okay. How do we, how do we help young people, help them determine what they want to do? You know, we, you've got the training, but now trying to get the students You know, we you've got the training, but now trying to get the students linked up with something that makes sense. You know, I've always felt that, you know, from the school district point of view, my personal opinion, not the district's necessarily, but my personal opinion is we need more, not social emotional counselors, but we need counselors that can help from an academic point of view, that help them determine their interests and their skills, match that, and then try to help them fit into wherever they need to be. Do you guys have a counseling program over there that helps young people?
Yeah, we do when students come in or potential students, they can take an interest test. I know there are interest tests in high school as well. We have advisors and counselors to come in to talk to students in the classroom. One of the best connections that we have are when our professional technical faculty connect with the professional technical faculty in the school system because then they can go and talk with the students in the class and say, oh, you're doing this, you're interested in the health career, and these are the options. These are things that you can look at. So we have tours of students coming over to to check out different programs. And in the spring, we have a large day where students from all of the high schools that are interested are coming in, check out all of our programs. And so, yeah, I don't know yet. Typically, we have a hundred percent participation from the high schools and Clover Park School District.
Okay. My I'll just finish off with the last one. Since since I come from an aviation background, you know, you talked about aviation, and I remember I used to have a runway ride out here, no longer there. So young people come to me a lot and say, well, you know, you were an aviator, you know, what what should I do? You know, one of my first encouragement is to tell them to look at a military option. But maybe I need to have start pointing your direction. Can they go all the way and get their whole pilot's license through your program or what can they do?
They absolutely can get the pilot's license through our program. And we also have a good connection with Horizon. And if a student has completed a certain amount of education, Horizon comes in and they will interview them and will give them its financial incentive to stay at school and if they will sign up to go work at Horizon afterwards. So there are some really good programs that are there for students.
I'm sorry, I was ignorant of that, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
One, you may not know the answer to, but is there a certain radius that a majority of your students are living on, living in from the location or certain transportation lines that are more prevalent among students for you?
I probably don't know that. I know that our our biggest school district is Tacoma. Our second biggest is Bethel. And I know that there are transportation difficulties. Even though we have a bus that comes by at the college, it's difficult if there are evening sections and things. So I, transportation does impact the students fairly significantly. They need to find transportation to get there. And I couldn't give you any too many specifics right now. Most, because of the age of our students, have a way to get there. But when they come and are a student at Clover Park, they also have access to free bus paths. That's a partnership that we have with with our local bus company.
Great. No, thank you so much.
Great. Thank you again, Joyce. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next guest this evening here in the room is Randy Black with Lakewood Water District. And so we're going to switch focus from education to infrastructure and in this case, water.
Well, thank you, Tiffany, and and good evening, members of the Planning Council. I'm Randy Black, General Manager for Lakewood Water District. And so I'm going to give you a little bit of background about what the district does and the services that it provides. So the the district was formed in nineteen forty-three under Title Fifty-seven of the RCW Code. And we have three Board of Elected Commissioners from the service area here in Lakewood. The district also, from a infrastructure standpoint, has thirteen tanks and about twenty-seven point six million gallons of storage. That's an important factor. One of the pieces in the report under the capital facilities is sufficient enough water for for growth, but also too, part of that that storage capacity that we have is also designed for emergencies. So under the State Department of Health, we're required to maintain three days of water supply in event of emergency. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that means. We have about two hundred and sixty-five miles of water main throughout the city of Lakewood. We have thirty-one active wells in the system that we utilize. And we have over two thousand hydrants. We have over six thousand valves. And we serve right now, connection-wise, almost seventeen thousand connections here. So who all do we serve? Well, we serve the entire service area of the city of Lakewood, but also some unincorporated parts of Pierce County, Arrowhead, Partridge Glen area, near the town of Stilicum. We also serve a small sliver in the city of Tacoma. We also have a wholesale customers that we serve. We serve the town of Stilicum. We serve Summit Water and Supply, Fergrove Mutual Water Company, Washington Water Company, and also Spanaway Water Company. So five wholesale customers we serve as well. So what is the purpose of a water system? Well, the purpose of the water system is supply domestic water for home and commercial use. It's also to provide fire protection, also industrial usage and irrigation. There are some very varieties of of water systems. Some may be comprised of surface water, such as the Tacoma water. You might also see those like us who are strictly groundwater wells. And there are those customers who use just wholesale water. They just buy water from Seattle, Tacoma. Cascade Water Alliance Group uses Lake Taps and they supply water to their partners as well. Why groundwater for the district? Well, because we are in a unique position where we are here in our basin, which is called Wyre Twelve. And in that basin, we are at the end of where the basin comes out into the Puget Sound. So we're the last end users in the basin. There are different sizes for utilities. We were considered a small, large to a large, medium utility. And the only thing that we do with our water is we add chlorine to give us a level of disinfection in the water to fight against any bacteria that could enter the system during our service to our customers. So what you have is mainline water systems that are made up. So our distribution system, when you look at tanks and you look at wells that we have, those are our source supply lines. And then as you get into the neighborhoods, you have your distribution system. And so they comprise anywheres from four inch all the way up to typically eight inch. When you get into your service line or your source lines, they're usually ten inches all the way up to twenty-two inches. We have some of those as well. We also serve, how we manage our customers is by meters. And one of the things that we talk about in the city's plan is efficiencies and sustainability. And then we also talk about carbon footprint. And so one of the things that you might not know is that each of your homes has a smart meter. In that smart meter, if you wanted to sign up through our customer portal, you can actually see the water that you use daily. You can actually detect when you have high consumption. You can get an alarm on your phone, you can get an alarm on your computer. And it also detects water when it's leaking. And so that really has helped us save water for not only for our customers and for the system, but also save on customer water bills. We don't need customers paying for water they're not using. So this system actually identifies a leak that's more than five gallons a minute and anything that lasts over an hour. So pretty efficient use of of technology there. We have a number of pump stations that lift water to our higher elevations such as Hemlock Hill, also over off of Nianza Hill. Those are systems where we boost the water up to serve those areas. And then in addition, you've probably seen like over here at Bridgeport Way, the tank that says Lakewood on it, that's a standpipe tank. And conversely, if you went over to Creek Ridge area, you would find a reservoir. What's the difference? Well, a standpipe tank uses the system pressure to fill and distribute. A reservoir, you pump water into it and then you have to pump it out. But it gives you much more economy of scale because you can store more water in a reservoir than you can in a standpipe system where it takes more pressure to get it up there. You just have to pump it out out of the reservoir. Where does the water come from? Well, we have four main aquifers that we get water from. We have the A and the C, which is the shallow aquifer. We have the E aquifer, which is the sea level aquifer. And then we have the geographer, which is the deep aquifer. Most of our pumps and our wells are located in the E aquifer. And we have some in, not many in the geographer because that's the deepest aquifer. Some of our wells in the geographer are over a thousand feet deep. Our sea level aquifer wells range from anywhere from three hundred feet to six hundred feet. And then the shallow aquifer, those wells range anywhere from a hundred and fifty down to that three hundred feet area. We also have a number of treatments that we offer or that we utilize. One is over at Ponder's well site. We have the old Plaza Cleaners, you might have heard about that many years ago, was a source of contamination under EPA. It was deemed to have PCE and TCE, which is basically solvents that are used for degreasers. It was a very large laundry service at one time. And so we have airstripping that strips out those contaminants out of the water. The other one that we're seeing now is PFAS. You've probably heard about perfluoroalkaliya substance. They're they're very endemic to our system. We use a lot of PFAS in nonstick pans, our no-sticking carpet, furniture and so forth. It's just very commonly used. Here for us, it's been used by the military base as a firefighting foam that was practiced for many years in the military base. And so it has leached into the groundwater supply. And so we are now working to look at funding to help with those. Fortunately for us that we've been on this situation from the very early starts when it was first brought up by the base that it was present there. And we've been working on two stripping or two GAC systems that we have, one at Ponder's and now one at Scott's well site that totally remove it. And so now we we actually have four other sources that we founded in. And so those sources have been turned off because under the state action level, they are at that level. And so so in order to go forward, we're looking at re-drilling new wells to go in the E aquifer and move away from the shallow aquifer where these contaminants have been found. So we have a variety of maintenance that we do. A lot of the things that we do for our system is exercising hydrants. We work with the fire district on that level. We do a lot of exercising of our valves in event of emergency when a water main breaks. We have to be right out there. We need to make sure that infrastructure will shut off and control property damage and damage to streets here in the city of Lakewood. And so that's a vital annual program that we do throughout every year. One of our biggest things that we're dealing with is our aging infrastructure. So some of you might have been around in the late eighties when we had one of the largest ULI sewer projects in the country here in Lakewood and Parkland. Pretty much the water system was already put in for the most part. And so in order to accommodate sewers going in, they had to cut those mains, service lines out of the way in order to accommodate sewer lines going in underneath. And so those when they were put back, they were put back, pieced in and used couplings and compression couplings. And those things have a life expectancy. And so in order to avoid catastrophic failure over the eight years that sewers went in out here, our Board of Commissioners elected to invoke what they call an R and R program, which is a rehabilitation replacement program. We do about four point three million dollars a year in replacement of the water system. And we've already replaced over sixty-eight miles of mains so far through ratepayer money. Other things that we talk about for growth for the city and providing ability for economic growth is new wells going in. And like I said, one of the unique things that we have here is because we are at the end of the aquifer system, it gives us the ability to work with the Department of Ecology, who is the facilitator of water rights, to show that our impact, both in the surface and in the aquifer itself, are minimal compared to if water was taken out further up in the basin, which if you look at how recharge happens here, if you look at where you go into Eatonville and up into Graham area, that's where recharge starts to happen for water that we pull out. That water starts to come in there and as it makes its way down here, it goes deeper and deeper. If you try to take water out shallower up there, you're going to take more of an impact from the basin. So that's what gives us a unique situation and where we are. Currently, for our water rights, we are good till twenty forty-three, twenty forty-four. And so one of the things that we will look very closely at is growth projections for the city and helping us be able to make a case, we are currently in for water rights to the Department of Ecology for three point three million gallons a day. And so when the city has growth projection, they're looking at planning, what you folks will be doing, is that information is important for us to make the case that in twenty years, growth will be here and we will need new water rights. We can't make that case if we're not having growth or we have excess water. They would say, don't come to us until you need that water. So this will be an important component for us going forward. And with that, I think I will be providing Tiffany with some comments later on. We're having a staff meeting to discuss some of those. But really, where we're going to be talking and providing some input to the Planning Council is sustainability and efficiencies. Sustainability, what we find is we've done a poor job of educating our customers on the value of water. And water is going to be very expensive in the future. And so to do that, we need to educate our customers on that finite resource. And so we need to make sure that they understand that it's we're very fortunate here in Lakewood to have low water rates. We really are. The EPA estimated household allowance for water in the country is a hundred and twenty-four dollars a month. And we only pay fifty-five dollars for every two months. So we just show the where we are in where the country, other parts of the country, water's more expensive. But it's just something that we're going to need to, as a utility, take on and and message that more adequately and more vigorously so customers understand the value of water. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Well, thank you very much, Randy. First off, one of the things that Planning Commission, we've had discussions on Clover Creek not having enough water. And so we've had some presenters come in here and say, well, they're just pumping all the water out, that causes all the problems. So give you a chance to share with us so that we can think through and ask the right questions.
Yeah, so I think the biggest thing I would tell you about is that USGS, the United States Geological Site, is going to come out with a new model. So that new modeling map is going to be where they take water being used throughout the basin and water coming in, and they will be able to mathematically look at what the impact of water is being taken out. In the earlier pieces of the study that we did with In the earlier pieces of the study that we did with power removing water, it's a very minor impact to the surface water. Again, because most of our water will point out in that deep or that sea level aquifer. So when you look at what's the, what's the leakage between the water we're taking versus surface water is very minimal. And that's been substantiated by the USGS model.
Okay, the next question that Planning Commission gets with is, you know, somebody may come in and say, we want to put sprinkler systems in all our houses. A while back, Dan Dur and I sat on one of your committees and we, we learned some of the things about capacity. And you know, if you put bigger pipes in to do that, then it gets stagnant and then it's bacteria and those issues. So help us think through some of that.
Yeah, so one of the things that's happening now is that meter manufacturers are coming out with what they call flow-through meters, which means is that the meter that goes in for, for homes that elect to have fire suppression systems in their home, they build it. What happens is they have a flow-through system. So the system is actually tied into their home. And so when they exercise a faucet, that water moving through the sprinkler system instead of being isolated and having potential for bacteria or other things growing in the water, it's not circulating. So manufacturers are coming out, you're plentiful now with merch back when you sat in on that committee. And so that's really moved fast and fast. So that issue is.
Do we, and along with those fire system, do we have capacity to have, let's say, we're going through our comprehensive plan, we say, hey, we want every home in Lakewood to have a sprinkler system. Would that make sense? Do we have capacity to do that?
Yeah. If we were to take fire suppression from the equation, we wouldn't have a water main of over six inches. So what we do is we, in order to be fifteen hundred gallons per minute, it's kind of standard for such a water. You require upsizing things that you have. And the reason why you can do that is because, you know, fires can happen anywhere. But that doesn't mean the system is going from all around. It's really focused on that area where the source and the storage is. So a lot of systems are designed the way ours is. But one of the biggest things that I have, you know, really comfortable design of system is we can move water from one side of the system together. We can move from the north to the south and the east and west because of the transmission. So if a large fire happens, and this is really important to the fact that the fire ministry, western fire ministry, has such a positive wiring when they go through maybe on their system, on the system here in Lakewood, they get a top rated because of the infrastructure and the fire.
Oh, that's really good to know. Another subject, the feds, well, let's see, the state changed its lead requirements or limits and it's in conflict with the feds. Give us some thoughts on that and where do you see that going in the future?
Yeah, so you're talking about lead and copper and Congress came out and said, you can work to, maybe because of Michigan. People in Michigan, issue of water quality. So fortunately for us, we have very little lead here. And even on, I would say, most of the state of Washington has very little lead in the system. There's lead saw and there's been lead fillings in there, but service lines really going through our customers' home are not practical because that ratio feels so bad. Anybody that's dug out here in Lakewood, can you imagine a soft lead line that, and block and stuff, it's just not practical. And so what we're doing in order to be compliant to that federal regulation, which is you have to be compliant with what they call inventory. So we have to inventory by taking samples throughout our system, school districts, nursing homes, daycares, all have to be sampled to make sure that the lead levels are below the limits. And what really is good for us is that we have a neutral pH level in our system, which means the water's not corrosive and the water's not salt. So any chance for reaching from lead saw or those things are pretty low.
Wow. I had one other thing, but it just slipped my mind. So thank you very much. I appreciate your input. And you know, you know that I call your office occasionally if I have a question. So thank you very much.
Randy, one thing, if I could, you mentioned about the new technology about a customer homeowner can go to your website and sign up for that type of app, you know, an app or whatever it is. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. What I will, it may be a little more complicated to go through our website. Just call one of our customer service providers and they'll help set that all on board. We have to just agree, we have to pass the seventy-five hundred customers to be able to utilize our system. And we only have twelve hundred people signed up.
Yeah. So the education part is.
Resource that the customers. Yeah, we keep pushing out a word, but certainly encourage anything you do that.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. The education part, that was interesting to me. So I had a leak in my sprinkling system. And so I'm like, geez, if I could, you know, look and hey. So thank you. And they did come out and warn me that we had a leak. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Our final speaker is actually going to be virtual this evening. It's Latasha Wertham from Tacoma Power. So we're going to shift from education and water now to the power utility. Latasha, hopefully you'll be able to unmute yourself and also share screen if you need to.
Okay, I can't seem to turn my video on. So I'm not sure if you can see me or if you need to see me, but can you hear me? Was that a yes? I'm sorry.
That was a yes. Sorry. Go ahead, Latasha.
Okay, okay. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Latasha Wertham. I'm the Regional Relations Manager for Tacoma Public Utilities. And I will give you a little bit of background, though I suspect you know most of this. But I just wanted to ensure that for anyone who may not know or for anyone who's watching or listening that they know that Tacoma Public Utilities actually consists of Tacoma Power, Tacoma Water and Tacoma Rail. And Tacoma Power is, provides electricity to customers. We do drinking water to those who are in our service territory, which as you just heard, does not actually include Lakewood. And Tacoma Rail, which is a short line rail that does business mostly in the port of Tacoma. And while our name is Tacoma Public Utilities, we serve customers in many areas around Tacoma. In fact, forty-seven percent of our customers are outside the city of Tacoma. That includes Stillcome, JBLM, University Place, Furcrest, Fife, Unincorporated Pierce County, and of course, the city of Lakewood, to name a few. I have the honor of working with the leadership and policymakers within the city of Lakewood regarding matters of electricity for our customers for Tacoma Power. And so I wanted to thank you for allowing me a few minutes to talk with you about some of the services that we have there, as well as something, something specific to Tacoma Power's energy or clean energy implementation plan. As you know, the city of Lakewood has three electricity providers, Puget Sound Energy, Lakeview and S Tacoma Power. Tacoma Power has the pleasure of serving about a hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred seventy customers. And that includes ten thousand, two hundred customers in the city of Lakewood. About nine thousand and forty of those are residential households in Lakewood. And then the other thousand and twenty or so are, are businesses and industrial customers. And then there's a few other smaller services that we provide, which include streetlights and traffic signals, as well as a few commercial solar generators there in the city of Lakewood. Tacoma Power is own, publicly owned utility. It operates for hydro projects. So we have a project on the Kallitz River, Nisqually River, Winu- Winu- Wanucci River. I'm sorry, that's not coming out clearly tonight. And then our Cushman Project. Our dams at these projects supply about forty percent, forty-six percent of the carbon-free renewable electricity that we have. And then we, we purchased the remainder of our electricity through a contract that we have with the Bonneville Power Administration. You all probably know that there are many topics that I can discuss when it comes to providing power. And so Tiffany actually indicated that you might want to hear about Tacoma Power's Clean Energy Implementation Plan that was adopted by our Public Utility Board in twenty twenty-two. There is so much that can be covered even on this topic, but I will give a very broad overview here. And then I'd be happy to, you know, direct you to more resources or, you know, talk to you individually or come back at another time if you want additional information of any sort. As you probably know, in two thousand nineteen, Governor Inslee signed into law the Clean Energy Transformation Act that we call CETA, which commits the state of Washington to have a hundred percent renewable and non-admitting resources for retail electricity by twenty forty-five. That law imposes new clean energy mandates on electricity, electric utilities throughout Washington, as well as planning and reporting requirements as a part of that new law. One of those new requirements is that utilities complete the Clean Energy Implementation Plan, the CEIP. And that would, that had to be done by January first of last year, so twenty twenty-two. And then it's, it's re-upped every four years. The CEIP is a planning document that aims at making sure that utilities are prepared to meet the CETA clean energy requirements by twenty forty-five, as I mentioned earlier. Tacoma Power expects to have more, more than enough renewables and non-admitting energy to, to serve one hundred percent of our load. And we expect our portfolio to be about ninety-seven percent carbon free. In the CEIP in twenty twenty-two, we took a conservative target of about ninety percent renewables and not admitting over the next four years. But even with our kind of conservative assumptions, we expect to exceed the standards under the law of eighty percent by twenty thirty. And by twenty forty-four, we will have met all of the CETA requirements. Currently, our portfolio mix is about ninety percent renewables and about seven percent non-admitting. And that non-admitting is from nuclear generation included in the generation we receive from BPA. Tacoma Power does have specific targets in the CEIP through twenty twenty-six that are informed by what we call our Integrated Resources Plan. The Integrated Resources Plan really projects out for the next, you know, twenty-five years to ensure that we're going to be able to serve our customers. And so to figure out which resources we have and, and how, how far they will stretch and what we expect things like climate to do in terms of rain and water that we would have in order to supply our customers with power. The IRP calls for maintaining our current level of hydropower operations, also renewing our contract with BPA, which is up for renewal in twenty twenty-eight. In addition, acquiring cost-effective conservation measures and also acquiring about ten megawatts of demand response. And I don't know if you're familiar with the term demand response. I could describe it a little bit to you if you'd like. I don't want to go into it too much if you already know. But what I will say is that part of what we'll do as a part of that demand response is to work with industrial customers and other large customers that during peak load times, they would use less of their energy so that there's more energy available in the grid overall. And so there's some savings there that we would see from doing it that way versus everyone using that energy at once. So that's a very kind of simplistic way to explain it. It's much more, it's much more intrinsic than that, but it certainly is easy to understand. Like, you know, if you have a big paper mill that all of a sudden decides, hey, we're going to turn off our power or turn it down or ramp down our operations for a part of the day when a lot of people are using their, their kitchen and washer and dryers and dishwashers and things like that. Everybody's not on the grid at the same time and there is power savings because of that. So that's just a really easy way to kind of describe it there. And you may be wondering how we may do some of the other things. We are going to continue working with our customers, both in the commercial area and residential areas on conservation. For commercial, we offer a diverse set of conservation programs, including lighting upgrades, equipment rebates, custom retrofits and strategic energy management focused on improving efficiency at their, at any facilities and their operations. For residential, we will continue to work with our customers to make their homes comfortable and to save them money on their electric bills, because after all, that is what most people care about is saving money. And so by offering this, we can give them upgrades, help them get upgrades to their insulation, their windows, their HVAC. And these are all programs we currently have that we continue, we will continue to have and to expand as we go forward. And then in addition, we'll be offering incentives on energy efficient equipment and custom upgrades projects for homes that fall kind of outside of the standards of the program. So maybe older homes or, or homes that's going to take a lot to get up to, to the energy efficiency that we, we want them to meet. We have programs also to assist low income customers for energy efficiency. And we're looking for, to, to roll out new programs in terms of helping some who are lower income. In the CEIP, we have also pointed out our intention and we are actively working towards ensuring equitable transition to renewables. So I know that that is a part of also what you all are looking at as you go forward. Tiffany talked a little bit about it when she opened up about really looking at the disparities that are happening. And so we use the city of Tacoma, Tacoma's Equity Index. I'm not sure if you've all heard of that previously. But it is something that is now includes the Tacoma Public Utilities Service Area. And it's actually being rolled out in Pierce County very soon. And so the Equity Index actually identifies areas within, soon to be Pierce County, where there, it can identify areas of high opportunity, moderate opportunity, low opportunity and very low opportunity. So these are the low and very low opportunity areas you will see. Really, they come up with that by indicators. So everything from health indicators to investment and infrastructure over the years, and they come up with these, the, what the opportunity in those areas are to, for the Equity Index. And, and what you'll often find is that, of course, lower, lower income areas tend to be in the lower, very low opportunity areas. And so those are the areas we really want to focus on and track the progress on energy savings and benefits. To, so to be actively offering our programs in those areas to help bring those areas up to code or to help them even be more energy efficient so that they are saving on their bills. And also, of course, the more they're doing that, the better for the system overall. And you know, the, the less we are concerned about future, in the future, not having the resources that we need. In addition to our CEIP and IR, and the IRP, our Integrated Resources Plan, we have plans such as the Transportation Electrification Plan and our Climate Action Plan and Climate Adaptation Plan, which we develop jointly with the city of Tacoma. And these are designed to help us tackle the challenges of climate change. We'd be happy to share more details on any of these plans with you at a later time as well. Please don't ever hesitate to reach out to me. And if I don't have the answer, or you know, I'm, I'm certainly not the subject matter expert. I'm the person that knows just enough to talk about these issues, but also can get you the experts to come and talk even more depth deeply about any item that you might be interested in. And we also, I just wanted to share with you that our director, Jackie Flowers, is currently sitting on the statewide committee that was put together by the Governor Inslee to form a coalition as we look at green electric electrolytic hydrogen. For some reason, that word always gets me electrolytic hydrogen. So green hydrogen, which as you know, we may be looking to get, well, we are looking to get funding from the federal government to form a hydrogen hub. And so Washington State has put in their application to be considered. And the federal government said, yes, we will absolutely consider you. And so now we're working towards the actual application to get some of the five hundred billion dollars that's being put into green hydrogen and at the federal level. And so our director is sitting on that committee. We are very interested in, in green hydrogen and really all forms of electrolytic opportunities to bring new. opportunities to bring new industry to our area. We really want to focus on green energies that have, that can have good, high-paying jobs in our area. And so we have an Economic Development Manager within Tacoma Public Utilities, who's been working very closely with our folks in our Innovation Department on being creative about how we can attract some of these businesses to our area. And so last year or two years ago, our Public Utility Board allowed the utility to come up with a, a special rate to attract businesses, green businesses to this area, our service territory. And so if the, if you're a green business and you move in and you're creating jobs in the area. You can get a pilot rate, which is a little bit lower than, that you would normally pay. And we already have very good rates as it begins, especially compared to the rest of the country, very low rates. And so this hopefully will attract businesses to want to set up here, have good-paying jobs, train people in the area to work for them. And we're really hoping that that's an economic development opportunity that will create more green energy. And, and if you don't, you're not familiar with hydrogen, with their, with it's. We're really hoping to see the innovation and it's starting to happen mostly in places outside of the US. Which is why the federal government has become very interested in making it happen in the US. Really in terms of like large trucks or, or things, what am I trying to say? The large ships, the ships, I couldn't get that word out at the port. So instead of them having to use the type of fuel that they use, they could use green hydrogen. And it's non-admitting. And so that is be, becoming very attractive around the world and, and we're hoping to start to develop some here in the United States. One item that I wanted to mention to you that Tacoma Power will be working on in the Lakewood area is a capital project and that's going to probably start towards the end of this year and go into two thousand and twenty-four. Where we, we will replace and upsize the wires attached along Stillacum Boulevard from John Dower to Custer. This is to address one of our substations in the area, the Plaza Substation that will be retiring. And so we're going to upgrade those areas and then that substation will not, not be in use anymore. We, you know, obviously when we do these things, we give plenty of notice. We always try and work directly with the folks at Lakewood to make sure that if there's any, anything going on that we should be aware of. We don't want to schedule it during, you know, the times that would be most inconvenient to people. We want to make it as convenient as possible. And then also we've partnered in the past and we always try and partner as we go forward. Because if there, there are improvements, other improvements that Lakewood is intending in the area, then maybe some of that work would be done at the same time. So we do our best to, you know, make sure that our, our customers and the residents of your area are inconvenienced as little as possible. We have a really great working relationship with the city of, of Lakewood. And we do our best anytime to be responsive to any need that they have, that Lakewood has. And, you know, we, we get together to have brainstorming sessions if we need to about certain things. And so we, we definitely plan to continue that into the future. And we plan to ensure that as things change or if things change, that we stay in contact. One of the questions that Tiffany asked is that we take a look at some of the codes. What I would say is about that is that I don't have the authority to make suggestions to you. I, I have run it up the chain to other folks who do have that authority. And if I hear anything specific, I will certainly follow up with you. But what I would say is that we do encourage you to continue to make it as easy as possible for businesses to come to the area. And that's through permitting, for instance, and, and working with us when there's things like that happening. And to don't, to, to really, we, we encourage staying away from changes that might hinder any processes or, or progress that we have towards renewables in the area. You know, so it, once, if you're thinking about changing things, like again, we, we've learned how to work within the code that you have. And if something changes, there are times when things can have unintended consequences. So we like to, if we can work with you to take a look at that ahead of time and then provide feedback against the experts, not myself, but experts who, who know these things would be able to pro- provide feedback to you once there's changes. I would certainly offer that and we will be very grateful for it. And so again, I just want to thank you for your time this evening and for your participation on the Planning Committee Commission. I know that, you know, I, I bet that big paycheck that you get is really what gets you up there. No, seriously though, I know that the, these are positions where you are taking time away from your personal lives to really serve the community. And so just want to thank you for that and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Latasha. Don Daniels here. Do have a question. So what's the impact to Tacoma Power on the increasing installation of businesses in residential on solar panels? What, what, in the future, what's the impact to Tacoma Power?
You know, it, it'll be interesting to find out exactly what that impact will be. We are not a utility that really at this point depends a lot on solar locally. We do trade power. And so that's a whole other conversation about how we trade power. But we do trade power and, and the reason I bring that up is because the power that we trade, say for instance, with California. That makes a large difference because we can buy power for them at a relat- relatively cheap price during certain times. And they're buying, you know, power from us at higher times when, when they need it because we have the clean hydro, right? And that's renewable. And so they, they tend to be selling power during the day when they have a lot of solar on the system and they can give up some of that power. And so as if power be, if solar becomes more expensive and folks are not getting as much solar in the areas that we're buying power for, from. There could certainly be an impact to customers that way. But through our Integrated Resources Plan, those are things that we're planning for. And really trying to figure out how to offset some of that risk that's there through other trading partners. And, and because locally, again, we're relying mostly on hydropower. And we have actually very little solar here because again, solar, it takes a long time to pencil out in this area. Just because we don't have the sun cover as much. And so, you know, we, we do buy wind and we buy other things from when other, when that, when those resources are on the grid. And so there's a balancing act there that the, the folks again, who are more subject matter experts in this than I am. They look at those trends, they look at the data, they look at the trajectory of where they will believe this will be over the next few years. And then determine how we're going to buy and sell power. And so that includes solar. And so if, you know, if it turns out there's not as much solar on the grid because of those increased prices. We have really figured that in to buy and sell power elsewhere. Does that make sense?
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions for one other here from Mr. Wagaman?
Yes, good evening and thank you. Hey, you. We, we just on the Planning Commission work with some of the things that impact power. And one of those was we work with a tree ordinance. And when you're talking about solar, one of the things that trees do is that they shade solar panels. So that means it doesn't work very well for us. Did you look at our tree ordinance that came out of City of Lakewood? Did that have an impact on you?
Again, because solar is just, it's such a small portion of what we use locally. There's not a large impact on us. I, I will say that we have been looking at tree ordinances kind of all over. Because there's a lot of places, a lot of cities that are looking or in changing their tree ordinances. And really wanting to preserve some of the old growth and, and some unique trees to the area. And so again, it's been, it's something that we factor in. But because again, solar is not, local solar is not a main part of our grid that we depend on. It doesn't have that same impact as it might have if we were doing this in somewhere like Arizona. Right? If there was tree cover there more often and, and shading, it would be more of an impact because you're going to have a lot more solar panels in those areas contributing to the grid.
You, you mentioned it during your brief that here in Washington State, we, we attract businesses because we have cheap power. One of the things in Eastern Washington now, for those of us in the computer business. They're, they're putting what we refer to as the cloud or these big server farms being built in Eastern Washington. And from my understanding, they're buying up some of the power rights that the aluminum manufacturing people used to have. But they're running short on power to run these big cloud facilities. Any thoughts on that?
So yes, you know, again, I'm not an expert in, in power rights or water rights. And, and water rights similar to what you just heard about your drinking water. There, there are some water rights, of course, associated with hydro, right? We, our dams have water rights as well. And they, and we have to go through a relicensing at the federal level every twenty years, twenty or thirty years, depending on the facility. And that happens the same in Eastern Washington. And so what those companies would have to do is, or will, will probably have to do is start to buy power from other places. And I don't know exactly how, wh- which utility would be responsible for that. But probably working with their local utility to buy additional, they wouldn't buy water rights or power rights necessarily. That power company would likely keep their rights, but would go out to try and find additional power to bring onto their system to then feed to the, to those cloud services. But yes, we are familiar with the, with some of those companies acquiring their own rights so that they can have power specifically for them into the future. And mostly because of the way, because the way that those water rights work in the, to, to buy that power. It would probably, it would have to be something like coming from an aluminum plant, going to one of those companies. It wouldn't necess, it wouldn't, I, I doubt it would ever be that it would be from, directly from a power, a power company that they would get rights. Because power companies don't ever want to give up their rights, especially if they're public. We, we wouldn't ever do that. So they would have to get private rights. And then if they have those private rights and they need additional power, they will likely buy it from their local power provider who would have to then likely go out on the market and get more power.
Well, you know, you, you talked about jobs and we're all interested in our communities about providing jobs. And since many people are learning to work from home, th- these big cloud facilities then become pretty important, you know, from a job perspective. So there's a lot of, you know, balancing that has to be done with a lot of folks. You know, you talked water rights, power rights, and you know, how do we, how do we make that happen? So it's a good discussion. I guess the, the other, my last question would be, you know, we have three power companies providing power to Lakewood. Does that make sense to have three different companies doing that? Does it make sense to maybe to, you know, you're one of the smaller ones to let yourself, that portion be managed or bought off by one of the other companies? Does that make sense?
Well, it sounds like it makes a lot of sense actually, except for the problem is other Puget Sound Energy maybe if, you know, obviously they, they do have more fossil fuels and they're trying to work through the Clean Energy Transformation Act themselves. But Lakeview would not have the resources to serve. We actually generate power, Lakeview does not, there's all comes from BPA for the most part. And so their contract with BPA really dictates how large of a customer base they can have. And they can talk more to you directly about that, but they would not have the ability to serve if we were to give up the portion of Lakewood. And then in Puget Sound Energy, again, you would, you would kind of be exchanging clean hydropower for what is not clean hydropower at this time. And, you know, we, I think if you were to talk to some of the nine thousand customers that we have there. We are very popular in Lakewood, so we would not want to give up our customer race there. And I don't think that most of the customers there would actually want to give us up either. And, and so, so I would, I, we, we do customer surveys and, and we get a lot of feedback from them. And so we do know that we are, we have very popular numbers in your area.
No, thanks for answering that question. I know that was a hard one, so thank you.
Yeah, and of course for me, I think, yeah, we should consolidate. They should all come to Tacoma Power.
Hi, thank you. So, you know, with, with things moving to electric vehicles and houses going away from natural gas. You know, we, we've seen the strains that that can put on systems, you know, look at California, they, they've, you know, they're all over the news about they've got to not charge their car because, you know, that's the only way they can drive and, but it's, you know, their system's maxed out. And so, you know, i- is that a, with more people working from home up here? And, you know, it seems like every summer it gets a little hotter and I just put air conditioning in my house last year. More and more folks are, i- i- is that a, is that something that, you know, we could be getting into in, in the near future or distant future?
So it's an excellent question. Thank you for that. It is really an excellent question and it's a question that Tacoma Power has been working on now for years. Because we're, we are determined to be able to serve our customers effectively and to not have those kind of rolling issues where people can't get what they need. And so that's what the Integrated Resources Plan was about in two thousand and twenty. Is to make sure that we are looking at all of our resources and all of, all that could come onto the grid over the next several years and to plan out for that. And to, to be, you know, to be very conscious of it now, knowing that we are heading into a future that is calling for more electrification and decarbonization. We want to be prepared for that. And so we are confident based on all the modeling that we've gotten from, you know, all of the brilliant people that do modeling. All, based on all of that modeling that we are going to be able to serve even as all of that comes onto the system. As new electric vehicles come on, even as trucks are becoming more electrified, as our maritime industry is becoming more electrified. We, we have planned out that we will have the resources to serve without those issues.
That's assuring.
Well, thank you, Latasha. I appreciate that for all your comments in your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate being here. Have a great night.
So, Mr. Chair, since I've got the mic in hand, I'll simply say there's nothing else from staff this evening other than to say, please look in May, there's three Wednesdays. If you would be available for all the, the first, the third, and then the fifth Wednesday. Does that make sense? The first, the third and the fifth week, that Wednesday, which would be just an ex, one extra meeting in the last week of May. Please let us know if that will work for you because we're trying to schedule some other guests as well. And then I'll turn this over to Councilmember Bokey.
You've been here a while, so I'll be very quick. And you have meetings every two weeks, so there's not that much happening in the first two weeks in January. We do have twelve names for the open positions. So we have received those, we have accepted those. And we're going to, on Monday night at our study session, we're going to discuss how we're going to go about the process, how many questions we're going to answer. The last time we did this is when Councilmember Bell was selected. We were virtual at that point in time, so that, you know, was interesting. And certainly have that option, but we'd like to do it in person, we know that. We'll probably cut down on the number of questions. We were talking about questions a little bit, but we have that discussion coming up. So continue your, your good work here. We got a presentation yesterday and we passed something on the comp plan stuff. Ms. Spear can tell you, and I think, you know, Councilmember Bransiter and I kind of went off the rails a little bit. But she can explain it all to you, so thanks.
Yes, Councilmember Bokey will continue to be the liaison to the Planning Commission this year. And just to clarify a little bit of what Mr. Bokey was just saying. Yes, Shape, the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners, if you recall that group. If you recall, that group uh formed formally this last year. Lakewood was the first one to jump in uh with the other cities that have now joined it as well. Councilmember Bokey and then uh Councilmember Bransitter is his alternate on SHAPE now. Uh so what happened last night is the city council adopted the uh Public Participation Program and the Work Plan to get through the big two thousand and twenty-four process. So they were brought up to speed on everything that's happened so far here with all of these various topics coming to you piece by piece, and then also the setup for how we're going to engage uh the public for the next eighteen to twenty-four months. And that's it from staff and Mr. Bokey, it sounds like.
We have any last comments by any reports for commissioners? Nope. Um uh we do have February first, our next meeting. And um I will most likely not be here. I fly back to Seattle at six o'clock, I think, so it might be a little tight. So but Mr. Pearson um said that he would be in attendance. If you have any other that can't make it, please tell staff, so they know. Especially if we have presenters again, so to make a quorum, yep. Good. So other than that, I think no other business. We'll call the meeting adjourned.